Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July meeting of the Emmitsburg Planning Commission. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Next, we have the review and approval of the minutes of the past two months, or July 5th and June 27. Are there any comments about the minutes for many of the commissioners?
I had a few changes to the June 27 minutes.
Okay. What are they?
Page three. Roman numeral four. The first sentence should say floor area ratio. Instead of ration or ration ration.
So essentially, a little typo.
Yeah, ratio.
Okay.
And then at the bottom of that, Roman numeral four, the last sentence should say a height restriction of 45 feet. Instead of a high restriction. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? July 5th minutes, okay? If so, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the two? Two meeting minutes with the amendments or changes?
I motion to approve the June 26 amendments is changed in the July 5 minutes as stated.
Okay. Did you say June 26?
27.
Okay. We'll hear a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes of June 27 and July 5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We now have a period of public comment about anything regarding the town. We will have a public hearing momentarily to discuss the economic development flex district. But if anyone has comments about anything else at this point, now is the time. Diane? Did you sign in? Okay. Well, we aren't on the topic where this is a general comment period. Okay.
Hi, Diane Walbrecker, 535 West Main Street. I just had a quick question. I was at the post office the other day. And it seems to me that it worked really, really, really well. And I don't know if this was your guys' decision or if it's somebody else's decision. But it worked really well to send everybody out the back and not have people coming in and out of the post office from the front. And I don't know why that was changed or when it was changed.
It's actually been the way it's supposed to been since the get go.
Pardon?
That's the way it's supposed to been since the beginning.
What that people.
Because that that street going along the run there going up towards the park. That's one. It's supposed to be one way in and back out. So you come out of Memorial and then come back around.
Right, but the signs were taken down, I believe. So it may not even be your guys'.
I'll just add that the planning commission had nothing to do with this.
Good. All right. Well, thank you very much, but it's kind of an issue that.
Okay.
Needs to be.
Yeah.
So thank you, Dan.
I don't know who controls that. It's probably the federal government.
And then I'll talk.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Okay, we'll move on to our business at hand. The first item of ongoing business is the proposed economic development flex district. We'll continue discussion about this proposal and we'll hold a public hearing about it and then vote to approve or disapprove. So staff.
I can go over the changes that Steph has made since the last meeting on June 27.
Okay.
So one notable addition is another purpose under purpose and intent in the first section. And this addition aims to ensure that the proposed development along US 15 preserves the landscape's quality and aligns with the objectives of the Cattockton Mountain Scenic Byway. The second change we made was section 17.26.070C, master plan design standards included language, language regarding floor area ratio, capping it at 0.40. And also, the commissioners, board of commissioners may require lower FAR if the proposed development is incompatible with the surrounding area or negatively impacts the environment. We've also added language to require a minimum amount of space or open space, which is 20%. And I had furnished you with examples of that, and I know the applicant will present that shortly. And we've also added language to require a corridor plant for the developments that are right along US 15 scenic byway kind of ties back to the purpose. And that would include appropriate setbacks, landscaping, architecture and signage. And this plan, this particular plan would have to be, or will be subject to approval by the board of commissioners as part of the master plan approval process. We also specified our the language for signs in the EDFD. And then we also added language that gives the board of commissioners to remove the loading zone at any future comprehensive zoning if they believe the master plan is no longer feasible. And then lastly, we included language that emphasized the emphasizes the applicants or the owners obligation to comply with the established standards.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions for staff, comments? Joe?
Regarding US 15, the frontage. What is appropriate gateway signage?
Page. Five. Letter number six.
So basically, the the state highway administration has some rules for signage along the scenic byway, so we would have to kind of comply with that. Our proposed development would have to comply with that.
Okay. So it'd be like, like your typical exit signs, like the like this exit type thing.
I think Mr. Dean knows too. He was shaking his head.
Commissioner, I think it's also a qualitative standard to, to ensure that signage met is complements the corridor plan that would be done as a condition for approve, developing along the corridor. And so that appropriate is to be judged by the decision makers based on the information entered into the record. The, the essence of the standard is that the signage not dominate the highway, but that it fit compatibly within this gateway condition, which is in fact, the entry into Maryland, into the county and into the town. That signage doesn't overwhelm or dominate this important location. And then one of the purpose statements in the beginning references US 15 in the enduring quality of the landscape and keeping with the objectives of the Cattockton Mountain Scenic Byway, which is about principally preserving the openness and the, the character of that byway. So it's to be, in my view, judged against those standards that are in the code.
So that's our, that, that would be our guidance document, so to speak.
I think so, yeah.
The, the byway. The objective set forth in that.
In addition to what Nigela said, and you would be in fact, looking at that corridor plan and the byway objectives.
Okay. That satisfies my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
So this would override the town's existing sign ordinances?
You want to take that, Leslie? Looks like.
Falling over. So basically, that because the EDFD zone doesn't have a specific classification that your regular signage is written to. This gives you the ability to apply your discretion with respect to the signage that is going to be permitted. And so Nigela is right, within the SHA easement area. Everything has to be approved by the SHA. Outside the SHA easement area, it does not, which is why sometimes you get some fairly unattractive. You know, neon 60 feet tall blinking signs that, you know, this is the intent of this then is to allow you to avoid that. Problem.
Okay.
Ellen, you have? Yeah, I have a few changes, I think.
Suggested changes?
Yes, suggested changes. I don't think they really impact the content. They're just really updates that I think that are needed under section 1726020, first paragraph. I think we should add institution there. Or institutional.
1726020?
Yeah, the first paragraph.
There's only one paragraph there.
Next second, sorry, top of page two. I'm sorry, can we go back to the beginning? I started on page two. I want to start on page one. So I'm referring to the clean version. Okay, so page one, item number three.
Okay.
I think we should add CR there. And institutional. Since those zones are included in the ordinance. Page two.
So before you go any further, could I ask of staff why it was written this way? I think there's probably a reason.
The principal reason for the zone is to create settings for economic development. And the B2 ORI and IP districts of the districts that are at commercial uses. So the, the intent was that we wanted flexibility to allow more creative commercial development than would typically found, be found in those commercial zones. That's, that's the.
But some of the 25 or greater acreage sites are CR or institutional sites. So if we want to add greater flexibility in those sites as well, those zoning sites as well, if you look at the map. Otherwise, I think if that's not included, then your proposal doesn't include like the trout property at the top, which is conservation recreation.
So CR is a temporary.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
It's zoned as conservation recreation. So if we want to allow greater flexibility in that zone, I think we need to say that in item three. Otherwise, that item doesn't cover that zone or the institutional zone.
Okay, so the, the intent is that flexibility is allowed in the new zone, the zone that's created. The zone that's created is the flex zone, right? And it so happens that there are a variety of parcels that are eligible for the flex zone flexibility. And one of those is the CR zone, but the flexibility is not so much in the flex, in the CR zone. It's in the floating zone. So development within the floating zone gets the flexibility. So that's why this is drafted this way. It's just to suggest that it's not as if that, it's not meant to say that these zones are the only zones where the only base zones where flexibility will be allowed. It's just meant to say that flexibility will be achieved and things will be much better than they otherwise would be in the, in these base zones. Having said that, I, I, I don't know that I have much of a, kind of technical reason for not incorporating the commissioners' comments as, as added. I mean, why not? I don't see the reason to not add it, I guess.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear from you.
Yeah, yeah. Because the, the basic logic that Valerie is explaining is correct in the sense that these are properties that are eligible for the, the floating zone designation. So it provides a level of consistency there among the districts.
I'm going to go off script for a minute. Do you see any problem with that, Mr. Dean? And you're, from your perspective?
It's really more of a question, I think.
Yeah, that as well.
I'm not sure that the town wants to reason those parcels that are institutional to economic flex. I look at that map. Really want to reset any of this?
It's not likely.
I don't. That's, that's, that is a policy decision for the town, not to the applicant.
Yeah.
Be proposing to reason an institution.
Yeah.
But I don't want to imply that, that there's some sort of institutional requirement or anything in the development. You understand what I mean, Leslie? Proposed uses are effective. I mean, that's a different page, but it is the, it's Chris, what is it? B2 ORI and IP, right?
Yes.
Well, the top of page two includes, yes, CR institutional is missing.
Apples and oranges.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To the top of page two is what properties can apply to the zone. That's different from what uses occur within. And now it does say on page three that any use permitted in the institutional district is permitted. So that's in.
Yeah, yeah, it's subpart five.
It's 7.26.040A, number five. Any use permitted in the institute. So since it's, since you can have institutional uses, I don't care.
Chris? I'm going to go back to staff for a minute.
Yeah, so, um, it wasn't the intent of this ordinance to apply it to institutional zones. So it's clear. Yeah. And so I'm, I'm spoken. If I would mind keeping the CR if, if it is, but the, in this revision paragraph three, but not to add I, because it implies we're making it applicable to institutional zones. And as, as Mr. Dean mentioned, if you look at the zoning map and you think, oh, we want to apply this to the, the town's institutional zones. I think that's going to take a whole nother round of deliberations and meetings if you wanted to go down.
All it is saying under 17.26.040 is that an institutional use can be.
Sure. So you can incorporate a church or a civic building or Newtown Hall or Public Works Building. Within a commercial development.
Changing any institutional zone.
Correct. Right, right.
You follow that?
I, I absolutely follow that, but I think that was never clear because the institutional lots were highlighted on the map. So if we're talking about taking a conservation area and making it into a small city, why would we be against taking an institutional area on the zoning map and turning that into a small city? And I don't mean a small city. Why would we be against the institutional lots when we're open to changing the conservation lots? That doesn't make any sense.
The CR is not really, it's a parking lot. It is not a
conservation.
Conservation designation. I know when I first looked at that, I was like, wait a minute, what's going on here? But apparently at some time in the past, the town chose to just sort of situate parcels in this CR zone with the understanding that it could be subject to future modification. So it really was not an actual conservation.
Just sidebar, I'd like to revisit that at some future time. Because it makes.
The next 10 year plan.
But that's a whole different conversation. But
Okay, so the top of page two, thank you, Leslie, because that makes a lot of sense. Because you, when you see conservation recreation, you think
Right.
We're not going to try, we're going to try not to touch that space if, if at all possible.
That's, it's really not.
Okay, no, that's, that's good. Okay, so.
A holding zone that
Correct, yes.
Future purpose.
Okay, so the top of page two, second sentence, approval of a master plan in accordance with provisions contained in. I think that should be 17 dot 26 dot 070.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again, please?
Second paragraph on, I'm, I'm sorry, page two, first paragraph, line two. There's a, a reference at the end of line two that says 17 dot 25 dot 060. And if you look that up. 060 is special exception uses. So yeah, so it should be 1726 dot 070. Which is the master plan approval.
Good catch.
Okay, and then dropping down a little bit, letter B, item number one, a master plan that complies with 17. It should be 17 in my thought process, 17 dot dat dot 26 dot 070, letter B. You go to 060E.
I don't think it should just be the, I think it should be all of 0.70.
Okay.
Because B is just the application.
Right.
But I, I agree with her that it should be 70, not 70.
Yeah, I think I chose B because of, it says the following shall be included in the application, and I think B referred to the application. Okay, so dot 070, that's fine. That was it, other than some typos. If you want those, I can give you those later for the final. Before you submit it to the board of commissioners. Thank you.
Okay. Dan, you have anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Anything else? So? For staff?
No, thanks.
I, I did have a clarification question. Get back to it. So page three. And it's under 17.26.030. But it's on page three, letter D. Says the planning commission shall conduct a thorough review of the proposed EDFD and master plan, hold a public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. And then on page four. Down at the bottom, letter C, master plan design standards. It only references the board of commissioners as approving the standards.
That's because they're the actual decision makers. You're providing a recommendation.
But we're, we're still providing a recommendation for the standards.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Right.
Uh, it, I guess it's kind of implied from the earlier statement, but
Well, I mean, if you want us to make it more specific, we can.
I, I might be more comfortable with that, making it more specific. That was all I had.
Had it under as such factors. I think you have a good point. If that's added as such factors that they consider in that statement, it covers it.
I'll let them word it. Yeah. So Does the applicant have any further comments?
Since it's a public hearing, I'll state my name for the record. Bruce Dean, the law firm of McCurdy, Dean and Graditor. On behalf of the applicant, also Andrew Brown, who's the broker for Mr. Trout is here. After our last meeting, I did have an engineer who I'm working with on a project down in the city of Frederick, pulled some different examples of industrial site that we recently got approved, which is currently at about 68% per impervious. That's a 32, 31, 32% pervious. You all wanted to know what it looked like, the standards, because the proposal is 20% pervious. And then I had them go ahead and, and by the way, this is, this, these two buildings have a floor area ratio of 0.36. So this is butting up against the max allowed. I'm going to hand this to you in a second.
Okay.
And then just for so you could see what happens. We showed what would happen if we lowered the impervious surface ratio or really raised it from 68% to 80%. That's what's in your standard. It allows you to get from about 500, basically allows you to increase your building size by about 10%. It's not more than that because you have to include a lot of parking. A lot of these uses, these industrial uses, there's a lot of truck parking, a lot of employee parking. So it doesn't matter how big the, and that doesn't affect the, affect the floor area ratio, because that's, as Nigela's exhibit that she was passing out shows you. That's just the building size, but you, you can't just ignore parking. And, and they've tried in a couple of projects to do pervious pavers in parking to try to, it doesn't really work real well. And then the last example shows these buildings at 90%, which is what's actually allowed in the city of Frederick for industrial projects. But you start ending up with a lot of parking and really big buildings and not a whole lot of green space. And I don't think that, I don't even think we're going to achieve anything close to that. Andrew and I disagree. He thinks 20% is too much. I think that with the Cattockton Scenic Byway Corridor that we're going to have to create, which is going to require birmingham and landscaping. The signage that you're asking about is, I think Leslie's put it really well. And, and Chris, that, you know, what's in the state highway right away, you got to abide by what the state highway says that, that doesn't change. But it's outside of the state highway area where you don't want to see. You know, you use the word neon signs. I was just, what we've done in other areas where there's a Cattockton Scenic Byway Corridor plan is we try to have, you know, a very attractive sort of entrance feature type thing, you know, landscaped brick, you know, welcome to Steve Trout's Park, whatever. But you don't want to detract from, Chris said several things. He said, you know, you're welcoming people to the state, the county and the town. But you don't want to detract from, uh, Chris said several things. He said, you know, you're welcoming people to the state, the county and the town. But the Catoctin Mountain Scenic Byway is also journey through hallowed ground. And so I think we should all strive, and certainly when we were drafting this language, we were striving to be respectful of that, that scenic byway. It, it is not something that has universally been respected in Frederick County, unfortunately. But times are changing and, um, the last thing we wanna do is produce legislation that, not that you guys wouldn't be still the, you're, you're still the guardians of the town under this ordinance, because you have to approve all of the standards. But I think giving you all that, that extra authority over the corridor plan will make sure that, um, it'll be a really attractive development and not detract from the town. So with that, let me, um, I just have six comments.
You can see it said, this is existing, this is the
And Nadeela did a good job showing the different FAR. It would be unlikely in this type of development, at least now, to have multi-story buildings, we think, maybe two stories, Andrew, but more likely not. And with the forty-five foot height clearance, you know, requirement, that's really gonna keep you down to probably one, one building. One story. Um, but with that, I'm, I mean, we've been working hard on this with staff and with you all for the last several months. And I don't really have anything more to add other than, um, I'm okay with uh, the ordinance as drafted with the amendments you guys have discussed and that I think we're in a good place.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Answer any questions you might have.
Missions have any questions for Mr. Dean?
No? Okay, thank you.
Are these all the same? They're all the same in here. Yeah. If the audience will bear with us for a moment, please.
One thing I wanna add, when you're looking at that, one of the reasons why we were, we have so much open space is because that particular lot is fronting on the Monocacy River. But I actually think that makes a good example, because this project would also, at least on Mr. Trout's property, if it's applied there, has the frontage along US fifteen. So it's effectively, it's like you're fronting on a nature area, because it has to be green and landscaped and all that. So I actually think it works pretty well as an example. But you can see how just by changing those percentages, the buildings get bigger, the parking lots get bigger. He tried to highlight in red what the changes are gonna be. It's a little difficult to read, but basically he made the bill, buildings go closer to the river. Um, and then the parking area increased.
At this point, I'd like to open it up for any public comment about this proposed new district for Emmitsburg. The economic flux district. No public comment? Going once, twice? Okay. We have closed public comment. Yes, Chris.
Okay, um, are you gonna return to the staff for some comments?
I can.
Okay, I'm ready when you're ready.
Okay.
We have a slide presentation, just a few slides to, on the topic of FAR.
Oh, okay.
It's just a, while it may not be necessary, we've put them together and this is the McDonald's site, right? We've kind of thought having a site that's relevant to everyone's experiences is best rather than an, an abstract drawing or abstract drawing. So this is, uh, the McDonald's site. It, it has a very low FAR. Go to the next slide, please. What I did here was to draw a boundary around the property in a way that is something less than the entire property. The entire property goes all the way out and encompasses the green space in the northern part of the, the empty part of that lot. But the apparent FAR is what's relevant, it's how you experience the space that matters. So I drew the boundary around, uh, the, the developed portion of the McDonald's site. And it's, um, the lot area is this sort of hypothetical lot area is thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet. The McDonald's building is twenty-eight hundred thirty-one square feet. So the floor area ratio is the, the result of that division. It's zero point zero seven. Very low, okay? Even if we just look at, you know, how you experience a site, you're on the site, you have a small one-story building. Most of the space is for circulation for cars. So let's look at, um, what that site looks like if we achieve a point four FAR. So next. Go next again. Okay, so there is the building that at a point four FAR, the building is fifteen thousand five, or eight hundred square feet. And, um, and that's what, and of course it's impractical, because you, you don't have space for parking and the like. But in terms of that site, that's the type of, uh, develop, development scenario that's, that's hypothetical and you know, possible if you had parking. But next. Next. Okay, there is a a same FAR point four, if you have a two-story building. You can imagine the building pushed up closer to the road, and now all of a sudden you do have parking. And you, you start to get to the scale that you want in an area where you have a little more density and population and customers and employees walking around a little bit more, because everything's not devoted to just parking. Next. So here, you, you might have a three-story building too, and you have a, um, same FAR. So these are drawn, these buildings are drawn roughly to scale, but it's just meant to show you how sites develop at various FARs or floor area ratios. Okay? So I wanted to pass that on to you. The point four FAR is a relevant standard for lots, for properties that developed. The question is, is it a relevant standard, standard for an entire master plan development or the entire zone? And that's where I just wanted to pause for a moment to, so we can reflect on that. If you go to page five. Item four. At the top, we, we talked about maximum FAR. The board of commissioners may require lower FAR, good. If the plan finds that the maximum floor area ratio would result in development that would not be compatible with anticipated development in the area or would create an acceptable adverse condition adjacent to the site. When we say maximum floor area ratio in the EDFD, are we saying the maximum floor area ratio of the land area on a lot? Because it's different. If we look at the development of individual lot, are we looking at the entire area? And I would say that FAR is generally considered a standard for lots and how they're developed. Not for an entire district or an entire master planned area. Because there's a lot of space that's not built on, like roads and forest conservation areas and stream buffers and all of that. And once you take all that out of the project, it changes things dramatically.
I, I actually wanna weigh in. I don't disagree, and I think the point four was intended to be on an individual building lot, on the individual building lots within, when, when we were looking at the examples we gave you. You can tell, I mean, there's, with industrial, you, like I said, you have a lot of parking, um, a lot of truck area. And really, I think the more relevant thing is, or for the protection of the town was the Chris, to address that, was the not less than twenty percent be pervious. That gets you, and that's on the whole project. That's the whole site. But, but if you wanna clarify, number four at the top of page five, that the point four, I think point four on the entire project would be a little denser than you probably want, or that we would ever achieve. The one I gave you wasn't even point four, and that was on the lot, and that's in Frederick City, so.
You'd be talking about pushing almost a million square feet on a twenty-five acre tract.
I don't think, I don't think that was our, ever our intent to be point four on the entire.
Right.
So if we wanna add a, a Leslie, you and I can come up with.
Go ahead.
It's okay.
So the lots haven't been carved out.
Correct, but I think what it needs to say is that within the, the project, I don't remember how we defined it, I'm sorry, but that no lot may exceed. That no lot may exceed the point four oh. And I think that, that with the twenty percent pervious area gets Chris what he was driving at, because I, I agree with that, was never the intent that we would, you know, take a hundred acres and put, you know, that huge amount of buildings on it. It's just yeah, forty acres of buildings. I don't think so.
You probably couldn't get enough parking.
You couldn't find enough parking.
Parking requirements.
And so the thing is that like the, the, the buffer area we talked about along the US fifteen, the forest conservation areas, those are generally not on lots, okay? Those are part of the project, but they're common area. Stormwater management, it depends. If it's the ESDs within a parking lot, those are part of the lot. If there's a regional stormwater management pond, that would again be an open space lot. So I think Chris, we, Leslie and I, I get where you're, exactly where you're coming from, and we'll address that. That, that no lot within the EF, EDFD project can exceed point four. And I think if you add that to the point, to the twenty percent, you get where you're, what you want.
Well, on, on that second point, Mr. Chairman, on the number five, the minimum open space. I think as Bruce has indicated, that is drafted in a way that would apply to the entire development area, not just any individual lot.
Correct.
Okay.
That was definitely the intent.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanna bring it to your attention that, that differs from what the performance standards are in the current code. Where they also say twenty percent, but they say twenty percent uh, of the land area of the lot, uh, must be landscaped open space. Why is that relevant? Well, again, if you have twenty-five acres, imagine eighty percent of that being covered with asphalt, parking. Buildings and only twenty percent actually open space. That is a substantial urban density of development, unlike what you'd find out here in, in Emmitsburg. So I would contend that that is a standard also that is applicable to individual lots. And, and, and our goal is to make sure there's, um, a real possibility for quality landscape and open space development. After all, while we, we do say the conservation residential or recreational area is a holding zone, it is in fact relevant. The comprehensive plan does acknowledge that there are open space amenities and forests and open space worth preserving on these parcels. So I, I think, uh, it's relevant to have some open space incorporated into a development of this magnitude. We're talking about district-wide development. We're not talking about just one, two little lots. This is a, uh, twenty-five acres is a large track of land.
So, 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 Mr. Jakubiec, what are you suggesting for number five?
Uh, I would suggest using a similar standard that's in the code, if you're gonna keep it twenty percent. Uh, if you're, wanna have a standard that applies broadly to the entire district, candidly, I'd say something like thirty-five, forty percent. That's what I would say.
Okay.
It's just not have these industrial parks to develop. And you're gonna have plenty of open space, like I said, along fifteen.
Excuse me, we're getting a little out of hand here. Could you come to the podium, please? And state your name, please.
Uh, Andrew Brown with CPG. Chris's example of a twenty-five acre site with eighty percent developed is, is looking at it, one lot in a vacuum. We're not looking at one lot in a vacuum. We're looking at a master plan community where we can designate certain areas that have hydrological features or any kind of environmentally sensitive features on a whole campus that would go into an open space protection, rather than carving up lots and taking area on each lot that may not have those environmentally sensitive features and clearing those open space. So it makes more sense to look at it broad brush, the whole project, and figure out where that open space should be, that's usable for the whole community of development, rather than segregating it into individual lots, just to meet a standard that was written for lots, not for a master plan development.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then regarding uh, the comment about the thirty-five percent. If we, we are talking about Mr. Child's property, which is a hundred and eighty-eight, a hundred and eighty acres. At twenty percent, we're talking about thirty-six acres of open space that is gone. That will not be developed, that will not bear any economic development for the town. So to increase that any further above twenty percent is really starts to become a huge taking.
Okay, thank you. So the fact, it's, so the fact that the planning commission and the town commissioners approve the master plant, master plan. I mean, if, if whoever develops this comes in with a plan that is just asphalting a lot of area, or there was massive buildings and it's taking up a lot of area. I mean, we would have the right to disapprove that, correct?
It is, it is discretionary. Having said that, it's about uh, how things are tilted. Right now, things are tilted in favor of substantial development. Or, so, and you, you know, this open space, this twenty percent open space, that includes your forest conservation. You might put fifteen percent of the track of land in forest conservation anyway, as a condition of meeting the forest conservation regs. And five percent is split for the islands in the parking lot. It's, those are pervious. The, the green space around the foundation of the building, that's pervious. You can see how you can get to twenty percent really quickly, meet your forest conservation standard. Then there's really no actual quality open space being created and, and you get what you see here. Can you imagine that covering twenty-five acres or the hundred eighty acres? That's just complete lot coverage. At a scale that it's just, it strikes me as pushing the envelope of what's compatible to Emmitsburg.
So, so I guess what I'm personally struggling with a little bit, we, we've had this language now for a couple of months, and now we're changing it. And I'm not sure that I would be ready to vote this evening on this, without giving this more thought. You're, you're kind of making things very different.
And, and difficult, and I, I realize that too, um, but I, I missed this particular standard. It was only when I was preparing for the meeting, preparing those exhibits that I thought, and actually Exhibits that I thought and actually seeing the way that open space was shown on the lots that Nigella prepared got me thinking about this particular standard. You know, one way that you can handle something like this is to say exclusive of the forest conservation and stormwater management. Well, it doesn't work for you, Bruce.
You started off, this is called a parent F A R. That's not true F A R, correct?
No. Because it would show it. No, it's not deceptive.
All of this is part of McDonald's lot, correct?
I I I made that clear when I. Well, okay, let's let's continue the logic of your 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 critique there. If you did that. How much bigger would the building be under the? Well, that's not very helpful to understanding that this F A R out that evaluation or open space. And the the green, the blue box would be considerably larger if you took the entire parcel. What I wanted to do is provide an example that the commissioners would be familiar with so that. There when they, when someone approaches the site of McDonald's, they're not seeing this space that's behind the dumpsters and landscaping. It's just not what you experience. But the same logic applies. It would just mean each of the boxes under these scenarios would be that much bigger. In fact, the under the first scenario with a one-story building, the building would be as big as the 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 parking lot. And the existing building would cover everything that's developed right now.
Chris, can I ask, what is the percentage of open space on that diagram? Do you know by chance?
Contained within the the.
Within the entire McDonald's lot, what is the outside of your your box? What is the percentage of open space?
The entire property?
Entire property, McDonald's property, do you know?
Probably forty percent, something like that. Inclusive of the in the buffering around each of the setbacks and the sides.
So is it twenty percent the way this number five reads? Is it twenty percent plus setbacks in buffering zones? Or is that included in the twenty percent?
It would be included in the twenty percent. This will allow substantial lot coverage. Of the entire development. Twenty percent is not that difficult to get to, you know? The question I was facing is whether this standard applies to the individual lot or to the development as a whole.
Right.
And once I thought through that and realized that it looked like it was the development as a whole, I thought it was important to bring it to you. So I brought it to you the last minute, but it's arrived at it the last minute, and I don't think any of us, just like the F A R realized. But we do have an acceptable standard that's in the code already that clearly says it applies to the lot.
Sorry, say that again.
We have a standard now, a performance standard for open space in the O R I zone. Which is the industrial zone, and it allows it provides twenty percent. Open space per lot. So one would think that that's what we were talking about, but.
I can tell you that we were never talking about it on a per lot basis, and they'll tell you why. We do master plan communities throughout Frederick County. Industrial. Retail, commercial in most municipalities and in Frederick County is allows a ten percent. Which I would agree would be pretty small amount of open space. However, the minimum open space in a residential development typically is thirty percent, which again, that we're talking about master planned communities. So the twenty percent actually was, and the reason residential is higher is because typically most jurisdictions require parkland dedication. Or at least HOA open space, you know, pot lots, swimming pools, what have you. So we picked twenty percent being higher than what is normal in an industrial park, because again, we're trying to get a master plan development as. Andrew said, that's as nice as possible, but going up to thirty percent when we're not providing public parkland. I've seemed excessive to me on a on the whole project. But I actually agree a hundred percent with what Andrew said. If you just do it on a per lot basis, you're just, you've. Might as well just rezone the thing to O R I and throw this out the window. Just go with your normal. I mean, the whole point of this was to come up with a flexible zone that would be done through a master plan that would have to be vetted and approved. You know, that'd be a recommendation from your body and an approval by the board of commissioners. And if they didn't like it, they don't like it and they deny it. It's. It's um, it's purely discretionary on the part of the town. But I that twenty percent came from a real place, which was I was trying to compare what. Other jurisdictions do for industrial and commercial developments, what other jurisdictions do for residential developments. And going higher than the one, but lower than the other for a very specific reason. But if you're just gonna turn it into a O R I, then I would suggest this has been a bit of a waste of time.
Hey, thank you. So I mean, I have been thinking all along that this twenty percent applied to the whole. Prop, all the property. I mean, is it feasible that this could be developed and there only be one lot? Is that theoretically possible?
I mean, theoretically, if it's a twenty-five acre max or a minimum twenty-five acres and could be one lot, I guess that's true.
Doesn't sound realistic. But. I I know there's a concept of cluster development. Where you try to cluster homes in the concentrated area so you can free up more open space. So I can kind of see that, you know, they can. Plan this community that may have the buildings closer to each other and possibly share parking. And have, you know, the open space around the perimeter or wherever. So I can see some benefit to having it applied to all the whole master plan rather than specific lots, because then. You know, I think that may negate some of the benefit of having this flex district. Now, whether or not the twenty percent is the right number or not, that may be an issue, but I mean, it's the number we. It's been in my mind now for a few months. I don't know, I'm kind of struggling with this.
I I think the thing is with the twenty percent over the entire thing is no less than twenty percent. So when it comes up to an actual plan. We can always say, hey, it needs forty percent.
First, the developer will fight you.
Right, but that's a hypothetical, the final bite. Yeah.
And you guys say, well, that's just not enough to make it more. That's just the floor, not the ceiling.
I think the twenty percent. I I think it's going to be dependent on whether you have one-story buildings or four-story buildings. The twenty percent is going to make a huge difference based on the size of the buildings in terms of how you view the space. So I mean, I think twenty percent in in with that expectation, I think the twenty percent is realistic. And I think the way the plan is written, it gives the planning commission and the board of commissioners great latitude. To like it or not like it, or to suggest changes. I mean, regardless of what plan is submitted, it's it's in your hands. You know, it's it's in your hands to make recommendations for for changes. And it's going to depend on what does the site plan look like? You know, does it look like a city? Does it fit within the Emmitsburg community? How does it visually look? You know, so that twenty percent is going to look different depending on the plan they submit, in my opinion.
I think, and I'm the one that's always harping on pervious versus impervious services, they'll tell me about, and I think this is saying it's a minimum. It it's the floor that we can't go below. We want to go higher when the final decision comes.
Do you have any thoughts, Dan?
Whole thing's got me more confused. As since the since the the passage, as she says, no less than twenty percent. As we said, when the master plan comes up, we can adjust accordingly at that time on a case by case issue.
No, I'm just taking it all in. Points made tonight. I don't have anything else to add to what was already stated. Sorry, not much help. Well, I'm kind of hearing from the commissioners that we want to leave the language in number five as is. Am I getting that right?
We do want to add, let me go back to that page, number five, that it applies to the entire lot.
Yeah, that would probably clear things up.
Not lot.
For the entire.
The entire property.
Yeah, the way it's worded, out of the project, yeah.
It says project.
Whereas number four is per lot.
So number four, the language will be. Not to exceed. Per each lot won't exceed point four. But number five will apply to the whole project. That where everybody's at.
The entire acreage, correct?
Well, project.
Okay. Well, a project could be developing just twenty acres.
No, it's the whole master plan.
For the entire acreage, okay.
Any other thoughts, Chris?
No, that's it. That's it. Good decision making.
Okay.
Like that.
So we were going to change some of the language in letter C at the bottom of page four. Were you able to scratch anything out, this pal? About including the. Planning Commission.
Yes.
See one. Kind of this, yeah, more or less the same language that would be. Okay, it it'll be similar to the language in letter D at the top of page three, I think, roughly. Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. So since we've had a bit of discussion here, I'm going to allow any further public comment by anybody if they wish to comment on any discussion. We've just had or anything about this proposed economic flex district. Okay. The commissioner is ready for a motion. If you wish to.
Okay. I move that we recommend the approval of the proposed amendment to town code title seventeen zoning to include seventeen dot twenty-six. Economic development flex district E D F D floating zone with the comments that we discussed tonight to be incorporated.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone wish to make a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to recommend approval of proposed amendment to town code title seventeen. Zoning to include seventeen point twenty-six E D F or economic development flex district floating zone. To include the comments that we just discussed. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And one abstention? Correct. Joe is abstaining. Motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Dean. Mr. Chair, I have a question not related to, well, it is related this scheduling wise. Are we looking at the August? Board of Commissioners Town Meeting, would that be on our agenda at that time? Okay, thank you. We have enough, everybody has enough time to. Okay. Thank you. Okay, then, our new business for this evening. Is a discussion of the draft for chapter one introduction of the two thousand twenty-five comprehensive plan. And I'll turn it over to Stan.
So this is the first draft, the first chapter for the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan. I can go through each section and kind of discuss what's there. So the first section of this chapter talks about the purpose of the entire plan and establishes clear goals or. The purpose is just establish clear goals and visions for Emmitsburg's thriving future. It appears that certain staff edits fell out of this pack packet because instead of fifteen years, it should say twenty years. In terms of growth, development and conservation and. It should say twenty forty-five instead of twenty forty, where it says long range, the plan addresses Emmitsburg's future needs through the year. Twenty forty-five. So the next section talks about the organization of the comprehensive plan, which. We presented a few months ago, having ten chapters with multiple sections to meet the requirements set by the state of Maryland. And the plan is supposed to cover various aspects such as land use, community development, natural resources, transportation, utilities, recreation and. Housing and should include maps and illustration to provide the basis for regulations needed for land use and. Infrastructure development. And then the location and community section gives an overview of the town setting in terms of regional geography and population centers. And how the town's location creates a lot of opportunities for people to live, work and play. And a few sample maps have been attached to show what's within up to seventy-five miles. Mile radius and a couple of them are my mass by the town of Rock Hall and these are excellent samples. For providing context and staff is working to generate maps that would adopt this style. The next section provides the legislative context for the comprehensive plan and mentions the twelve visions for planning by M D P. And there's a placeholder for a description for. The plans for Frederick County and other regional plans and how they relate to this twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan update for Emmitsburg. The planning history section goes back to nineteen seventy-four. Staff is considering adding more details to this, particularly more. Staff is considering adding more details to this, particularly more explanation for the MDP's document revisiting the comprehensive plan. Also, more details would be added to the next section to give some context for the twenty thirteen legislation. The town intends to involve the community, the town's residents, various stakeholders and local organizations in this comprehensive plan update process through visioning exercises that are currently being planned by staff. And the whole process must answer certain questions to inform the entire plan. And the questions, well, there are five basic questions. And the first one is where's the town now? And that would take an inventory of the current assets, opportunities, challenges. And the second question will answer where the town is going, which would be a series of future scenarios based on the inventory obtained through the first question. And the third one is where does the town want to be, which is where the public visioning exercises will really be important because to answer this question, we, the town really needs to consider the preferred future based on shared values and aspirations. The fourth question is how will the town get there? And it's possibly the hallmark of this comprehensive plan. It would involve decisions and actions required to take, to make the shared vision possible. And it would include specific indicators and measurements that would be, that would show where the town is going. And another question it would be, would be to answer whether the town is making progress and that, and that we would use the indicators identified in the previous question. So the completion of the public engagement sessions would inform the last two sections of this chapter, public engagement and the town of Emmitsburg vision, and of course, many parts of the subsequent chapters. So this is just a draft to start a discussion and encourage for the collaboration.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any comments or questions for Najil?
I do. I, I was looking at our current comprehensive plan compared to the new introduction, so I could kind of determine what's been changed in terms of our goals and our visions. And it looks like the old introduction was just an overview, but now it looks like we're pulling in information about public participation as well as legislative and planning context information from the old chapter two into the introduction. So it seems like we're taking multiple sections and now making them part of the introduction. So it's, it's hard, it's difficult to look at the current comprehensive plan to determine what changes have been made to the new plan. I guess, is it possible to, I mean, are you update, are you rewriting the entire plan from scratch? Are you taking the current comprehensive plan and updating it? What, what is the goal for, for the update? Like, I'm unable to follow when reviewing the old comprehensive plan.
So basically, it is an update to the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, but it wouldn't just be like adding to it. It's like an iterative process where you add to it. But maybe if there's a change in the vision, then we would include that as well. So it's a change, but essentially it is an update. So, yeah.
I think we're thinking it would be nice for the reader to read about the, how the town arrived at the plan through the public, public engagement process upfront in the first chapter. And then just the statement of the vision right up in the front. We have the state's vision, which is important, and we have to have a plan that implements each of those twelve visions. So then, after reading that and understanding that, then say, you know, but this is the town's vision, a little more detailed and more specific. So it just seemed like a, a modest change to the current plan, but one that these changes seem to be justified and have a nice flow to, to the introduction.
Yeah, I, I guess when I was reading the current introduction, it seems like some of that information didn't carry over to this introduction. So without comparing them word for word, I don't know what's been omitted and what's been added. I guess, can we use track changes so we know what, how we've arrived at this or what we've omitted from the, the new text?
That's really, it's really impractical to do that. And you're going to have to review and understand and appreciate the entire document. While it will be formally an up, an update, it will be a new document that requires you to approve it as a planning commission. There's going to be new chapters to the document that don't show up in the current version. So it's, it's going to be a different document.
Yeah, I, I, I take a slightly different view of the plan. To me, this, this is an opportunity to improve and to reflect what your views are for the future of the town of Emmitsburg. It is a long-term document. And anytime you can make an existing document better, it's your obligation to do so. And I can understand the, the difficulty with respect to, you know, being like, for example, using the EDFD text amendment, that's something where track changes works because you're working on the same ordinance and it's an iterative process in that way. But a comprehensive plan is a comprehensive plan. And so to the extent that you want to start over from scratch, say, on the transportation, because I know we've talked about in other contexts, you know, the, the Emmitsburg bypass, for example, is near and dear to everyone's heart. And not near and dear to everyone's heart. But I think that, you know, to the extent that there are certain sections, you know, each of those sections is going to be examined. And we could certainly say, well, we didn't include this because X, Y, and Z. But I do think that it's important for the state's mandatory criteria to be included because people want to know, well, how in the world did you guys come up with this? Why are you considering these things? And so it's just, I mean, it's really exciting, actually. It's, it's a really cool project for this planning commission to be involved in because, you know, you get to set the tone. You get to help set the tone for this town for an extended period of time. And so you're going to have to read the last comprehensive plan and the drafts of this comprehensive plan. And then, for example, Valerie, if you say, well, wait a minute, you know, I really liked this description of, you know, whatever it is in, in round one, is that going to be addressed somewhere else? And just make a little note because if it's something that, that you believe is really important, we want to make sure it's in there. May not be in the same place, but you know, I'm concerned that it would be a little bit like the, the pea soup that you would have gotten back had we done a compare for one of those EDFD ordinances, which was, you know, absolutely impossible to follow. So I think it's, it, it's, it's long, it's difficult, it can be painful. But I don't, you know, for, in some cases where track changes work, sure, we'll try, we'll do our best. But in other cases, it's just not going to pan out.
Right. And I'll just add to that Frederick County went through and developed a new comprehensive plan, I think in two thousand nineteen. And it's totally different from a previous plan. It was a whole new concept, a whole new way of doing things. And just, if you looked at the old one and looked at the new one, there was almost nothing to say. I mean, that's not to say that, you know, we're going to change everything with our plan. I mean, that's, it's an evolving process and we need to get lots of input from the community as to what they would like to see happen in town. And, and, you know, get all the comments and condense them and put them together and try to come up with a plan that makes sense for everybody.
I mean, I always look at it as a reference, the old one's a reference document. They come back, so we see where we were and where we want to go. So it's, it's a reference, not that we have to replace A for B in it.
Yeah.
Also want to consider, well, what did we predict that worked?
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and address that in your analysis.
Any other thoughts from any of the commissioners? So, so a question, is this kind of the format we'll be using going forward? That every meeting will say have a, a draft document from some part of the comprehensive plan and will review it and make comments? Is that how, is that how this is going to play out?
Basically, yes. Yeah. Yeah, hopefully I'll have more completed chapters too. Yeah.
Yes.
When is public input? I mean, it's always hard to get public input, right? In terms of the process of developing a plan, because what happens is you'll have a comp plan, then twenty seven hundred people show up where you're actually going to, you know, annex something with the designation that was passed, but you comp landed, you didn't hear a P about anybody. So I don't know if there is like a public outreach plan that's going to be done during the planning mission process. Then it would be good if we tried to be, you know.
Yeah, I think we got to try to grab different segments at a time, you know, like here is what our civic and religious organizations, what do they want? What's business organizations want? What's general public want?
So Najila, I think somewhere on the schedule, it showed some visioning by the community, and you referenced that earlier. I mean, do we have a plan for when that's going to happen or how it's going to happen?
I believe the timeline we gave you is, is like next summer, but like I said, we're still planning the visioning process, so.
Okay.
It'd be great if it's earlier than that and we have multiple sessions, not just one session. And, and I'm working on getting like an email, list of emails that I can send out these letters to or just updates, you know, okay, we're doing this. So that we can get more people in, in here and get more representation, so, and someone's going to help me with that, so I'm excited about that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Najilia, wasn't there also going to be like a website portal? Some sort of access for the public up? I, I don't think it would be like certain timeframes would be open. It would just be open for comment, or am I misremembering?
Oh, so yeah, there's a sixty day, sixty day, right, review.
Talking about something.
No, I'm talking about.
Oh, the dashboard. Yeah, there is a dashboard now with the timeline and the previous comprehensive plan.
I didn't, I didn't look at that. Is there a spot for public comment there? Or are you looking for public comment in a, in a meeting setting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, but I, I can see like virtual comments would be very helpful too, because not everyone can, like, we just want to make this accessible for everyone, so. So, yeah.
So there is a place on the dashboard for public comment?
There isn't right now.
There is not.
Yeah, but it's just the timeline right now and just information about the conference.
Maybe my memory is wrong. I, I thought when I looked at the dashboard, it was, it outlined some visioning going on this fall, not next summer. Did I read it wrong? I made it, read it wrong.
No, you, you probably are right. I, I'm probably remembering it wrong, so, yeah.
Sometime I thought some of that would happen this year, but I could be wrong.
Yeah. But we'll definitely have a better updated timeline.
And as far as I'm concerned, and with the consent of the rather, the other commissioners, as we go through this at each meeting, like this evening, I mean, I'm willing to open it up for public comment each meeting. In addition to the regular public comment time, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think the more we hear, the better.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Diane, we know where you'll be for several months now. You'll be with us.
Let's open it up. That's what I was getting to. I, I had this funny feeling you wanted to make some comments.
All right, Diane Bobraker, five thirty-five West Main Street. As some of you know, I was very, very heavily involved in the, I believe it was in the nineteen nineties with, it was very rudimentary back then. And we worked on the comp plan. And I had a group of people from each of the representative areas in town. Like EBPA had a member, Emmitsburg Council of Churches had a member, the Mount had a member, NETC had a member, Daughters of Charity had a member, Main Street had a member. Brookfield and Pembroke weren't even there. We had Silo Hill. And we had the little community over there that's in the floodplain, Emma Gardens, thank you. Sorry. Don't, don't put that out in public. But anyway, so what we did is we actually met once a month. And it was driven by the citizens. It, we had a little bit of help from the planner, but the planner was not driving it and the planning commission. Well, I was on the planning commission, so I guess we were driving it. But I was driving it with a group of people that would get together once a month. And we sat down and we went through what was existing of the comp plan and where we wanted to go. The process wasn't as concise and as organized as it is now. So we made a lot of mistakes along the way because we were just kind of feeling our way. Like there weren't twelve visions from the state of Maryland or anything like that. But, but what we did is we really involved people from the beginning. So when I look at the introduction here and I see on that first page, it says, material represents the combined efforts of the planning commission, town council, and town staff. That's not right. I mean, we can't talk, we can't wait to talk about public participation until next summer. We have to get the members of the public and the representative organizations involved now, I really believe. So Najila and I were talking a couple of weeks ago. And I said, hey, I met the new guy who's in charge of NETC up there. And I told him, you know, it would be great to get involved in the town, and he said that would be wonderful. So Najila and I were talking and she said, well, why don't you reach out and give me the list of all the people? Or maybe you write an email or something. But it needs to be a little more organized than that. I think we need to discuss like a suggested list of participants and then come up with the process and say, you know, we're going to have a meeting. And maybe not have it at the planning meeting. Maybe there's another time when these people might be able to get together that might not correspond with a planning meeting. So it could be like a subgroup and, you know, then have somebody from the planning commission with us. But I just think it's important to get public involved now and to get representatives from all of those groups. Okay, Brookfield and Pembroke really are not, I, I mean, I'm just going to say it, they're not that involved in our community yet. And I think this might be a way to bring in some of those people. I'm so glad you're sitting up there. You know, it's important. But, but getting people involved and making them feel part of the process from the beginning, rather than saying, here, we, we got a couple of drafts of chapters here. Take a look at it and see what you think. So maybe those visioning meetings need to start earlier. And I'm willing to help, you know, I can't do this full time or anything, but I'm willing to help organize and get some of the community groups involved. So I just want to know what the best way is to work with you guys without stepping on anybody's toes or doing something that's not right. And working closely with you guys so that I can help, but not be a director of anything. Just be a volunteer helping with public participation. Because I go around the country and I talk about the. Because I go around the country and I talk about the importance of these plans and the importance of public participation and the importance of community groups really feeling that sense of community working together. Anyway, so I'd just like to know what I can do to help.
Thank you, Diane. I, I totally agree that public participation is essential and it's essential to do it as early in the process as possible, I think. Yet I wasn't totally involved, but I think when Frederick County did it, one of the first things they did was develop their vision. And it was a community process that developed the vision. There was a visioning committee, I believe. And, and then there were all kinds of subgroups for every category, but it was a much more bigger thing than what our town has to deal with, but it's still essentially the same thing, just at a smaller scale. So as far as the mechanics of how that'll work, I don't have any vision in my head to how that will work at this moment, but.
I think Najila probably already has something for us, so maybe she and I just need to sit.
Of course, let's, let's get coffee or something. Yeah, yeah, but yes, I do have a bunch of ideas, but everything's in the raws and I would like to have a more presentable version of it at the next meeting or before that, so. Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Quite brutal, okay, that's fine. So just to be clear, you, you said at the next meeting, we'll have kind of a plan as to how we're moving forward, a little more clear plan and how to involve the public.
That's correct, yeah.
Sounds good. And that's all of our business for this evening, I believe.
When is our next meeting?
I don't know. When is our next meeting?
August twenty eighth, that's the last Monday.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else, Steph? That it? Okay. Now in the business, we're adjourned.